Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551, open meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a public hearing meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, November 20th, 2025 at 5:01 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at the Austin ISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum, a sound broadband, and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you for joining us. And Trustee Gonzalez is joining us by Zoom tonight. Next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the Board. This time around allows speakers to comment publicly pertaining to the turnaround plans. There will be an opportunity to comment about other items after the hearing. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public hearing portion of our meeting called a dedicated Austin ISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio record their remarks. Tonight, we have four people who signed up to speak in person, and we have six people who left a recorded message for the hearing, and we will now move to in-person testimony. In order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period at this meeting, each speaker is allotted one minute. No substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted. Callers who signed up to speak in person, please come to the microphone when your name is called. As you come to the microphone, please press the button to turn the microphone on. There will be a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time, and when the buzzer sounds, we ask that you please make a final thought in one sentence. And we ask that whether you come to give a complaint or praise, that you reference any staff member by position or abbreviated last name. And we ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for others at all times. We have four in-person speakers tonight. Amber Welsh, Rochelle Olivares, Jason Rodriguez, and Sanovier Santander.
First, I want to let you all know it's been a real challenge to participate in the TAP development process as a parent at a TAP campus. A group from the district visited our campus, presented three options, but we only received more information from the district after they had decided that closure reassign was best for our students. And we still haven't been able to figure out or find out more about which options were considered or why closure reassign was determined to meet our students' needs. And I would just ask for greater transparency throughout the process, including when decisions will be made, how they'll be made moving forward related to transitions. Additionally, my second thing is, as you all know, community is a real asset as a part of student learning, and we really want to be involved in discussions about planning and implementation. But communicating with district staff related to TAPS has been nearly impossible. Oh, my gosh, this yellow light is stressing me out. Anyway, please communicate with us better. We want to work with you. We're all rooting for this to work because our kids want to learn. So, reach out if you have more questions.
I am a parent of a third grader at We Dane Elementary. The vote that you are making tonight will change the landscape for 50 years. Each of the TAPS that you have closure reassign deserve an individual vote so that we can go back in history to this moment and understand if there could have been a different outcome. Each of the TAPS have been district-led, have been district-written. We have been allowed, we, the community, have been allowed to comment but not vote. We have been allowed to review but not edit. Tonight, you will be presented with a community-led plan that calls for a restart of We Dane Elementary. I urge you to trust the community and be brave and vote for this restart of We Dane Elementary. Closure to We Dane would desecrate the decades-long partnership that has been built to make a community school a nationally recognized model in southeast Austin.
Hello, I'm Jason Rodriguez. I'm with We Dane Elementary. And in front of you, y'all have an amendment for a restart and not a closure. It's almost physically impossible to close our school and put us with another one. Y'all just need to take a close look at that. Y'all are not only closing the school, y'all are ripping our hearts out. Y'all are taking us out of the community. Our community is fed with several resources around the city and the neighborhood, and it would be vital just to keep it open, even if it's not under We Dane. Put it under another name, whatever y'all got to do to keep going, to make this work. Another question I have is, what's with the 50-year plan? What about now? We got to worry about what's happening these next three years, and why aren't y'all taking advantage of y'all's vital assets? And that's us parents. I've seen them do amazing things. They've worked with other people, and I've seen our faculty do even more things. So, y'all need to take more consideration in what's around y'all and communities and not just be absolute with things. Thank you.
My name is Sanovier Santander. I just ask y'all this afternoon to, I have two kids. I have a second grader and I have a fifth grader at We Dane. We ask y'all to stop, look, and listen. Plan A should always be, as we talk, that should be the community plan, and listen to the community, what we have out there, what options we have. We have very strong teachers, passionate teachers at We Dane. We ask y'all for a restart for We Dane. If y'all have left the Latino community out for a long period of time, we have left behind. And this is, We Dane, it's just the center of the community that still holds, and just amazing people around it, the school, the teachers, I mean, the staff there, and all the parents also, they just come together on a daily basis to make this, to make the kids just a great day each and every day. So, thank y'all.
We will now play the recorded message for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
My name is Nikki. I'm an AISD parent. In the season of thanks, I want to say thank you to the principals at our TAP school. The cavalry finally came to serve your schools and then trampling right over you. AISD showed up too late and is taking your job and your students away, and I'm so sorry. You aren't the cause of your school's closing. Thank you for the many more months that you will work this year to grow your schools, and thank you for the years you invested in them back when it was just you and your school community and the area nonprofit supporting the work. Your commitment is obvious, and our thanks should be coming from every corner of Austin ISD. Thank you to ISD staff and trustees for the monumental work that you've been doing involved in rightsizing our community and our schools and our district. Thank you for families at Sunset Valley, Ridge Top, and Riley for your readiness to build community and continue in bilingual education. The teachers and leaders will make all the difference in the years ahead at your new schools. Thank you to the teachers at TAP campuses. The work you do doesn't always receive the respect and pay it deserves despite...
Delay the vote on closures, consolidations, and program changes approved TAPs with restarts. This district tour partner, Dolly Burnett Webb, harms till echoes. Please don't repeat it. We keep hearing we have to do hard things, but hard things are investing in our school communities, hard things are trimming administrative access so we can pay teachers and fund campuses. Hard things would have been implementing TAPs two and a half years ago, so we went one step from TDA takeover. That failure was not on the community, it was on leadership, leadership that was warned, and they said, "We have systems, we won't be here." But if they have systems, they don't work. We were promised cuts away from campuses first. We got performative cuts in spending, fast-track school closures, but largely like two people now only for lack of integrity of the processes, the district said. That issue has...
Good evening, trustees, superintendent and staff. This is Ann Tyge, former AISD trustee, 2012-2020, and retired AISD educator of 34 years, speaking to Agenda Item 3.1. Our urge the trustees to approve the plans outlined in 3.1. It's the right thing to do to ensure the success of AISD students now and in the future. AISD's core mission is to educate students, identifying the resources needed to accomplish that mission, take precedence over the agendas of some adults. Trustees, it is not the right thing to do, the bidding of a small group of vocal constituents who either do not understand or respect the overall burden faced by the district because of state action or interaction, or who do not understand or respect the needs of all AISD students, especially the most vulnerable ones. I congratulate the superintendent and the trustees for taking this bold step. It will go a long way to providing equity in the distribution of resources needed to educate our students so they become principals, critical, creative thinkers who can pursue life, liberty, and happiness in the 21st century and beyond. Change is hard, and uncertainty is hard, but we live in a world of constant change and uncertainty. We need to learn to react to change and uncertainty by being proactive and with mindfulness, not with anger. Peace out.
My name is Patrick Bettes. I'm a parent of a child at We Dane Elementary, and calling to just say, "Let's do a restart, let's not close the campus. There's already a lot of damage just being done. Let's mitigate that. Let's do something different. Let's pull together for our kids, make the investments into these schools that they've needed for a while, and don't close these schools because you're going to be destroying the community."
Good evening. This is Rachel Bettes. I am a parent of a child that's in the special education program at We Dane Elementary. I just wanted to add my thoughts and ask trustees to please vote yes on restarting We Dane. If that is our option that's left, we have found such a surprising blessing there. All of this, the principal, he's out with the kids, he knows our son by name. He is so friendly and so professional, truly cares about the students. And then the teacher name has been such a blessing for our son. But considering the neurodivergence there, we are hoping for as little amount of change as possible. We are fortunate enough to be able to walk to school, which is also a blessing, and we would just love to see the location continue at minimum. Thank you for your consideration, and I know these decisions are tough, but yeah, we would love to see We Dane remain open and that building remain open for a restart. Thank you so much. God bless. Bye-bye.
My name is Carol Regley. I have my doctorate in occupational therapy and am an adjunct faculty at ACC Eastview. I urge you to keep the historic school, Oak Springs Elementary, open because closing it would undermine the very equity goals we all share. This campus is more than a building, it is an anchor in an education hub that includes ACC and the early college high school. The students, many from historically marginalized communities, walk to the school. They do not have transportation to another campus. Relocating would immediately create barriers to attendance, safety, and academic stability. The district has already invested millions in redeveloping this campus. The school is fully staffed this year, including interventionists who were previously missing. Even under past staffing shortages, this campus nearly met the standard this year. With the right support, it is poised to exceed it. We cannot achieve educational equity by disrupting communities or by placing the burden on our youngest learners. Closing the school would not solve a problem, it would create deeper ones. Let's honor our investment, our students, and our commitment to equity by preserving this campus and giving it the stability it needs to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our callers and our speakers. This concludes our public testimony. Trustees, are there any questions seeking clarification? All right, thank you. We'll have more public, oh, yes, sorry, yes.
No, I have a question for the superintendent. As we are preparing for TAPS, I really am wondering, I know that you've mentioned that you really want to take things to TEA that we know will be approved so that we can begin the work and continue the work that people are already doing. Would it be possible to take a school that has shown progress and ask for additional time?
I do not believe that would be possible for us to do.
You don't believe it would be possible for us to do, or you don't believe that TEA would accept it?
I don't, I do not believe TEA would accept it.
Okay. I'm saddened because some schools have been struggling, they've been struggling all along. But we also have schools that are making that incremental progress. And why our state would then say, "No, we don't want to give you more additional help." I think Trustee Willie Chu has beaten this horse, and I agree, it is punishment to not reward people when they are making those gains. And I specifically speaking about when, and because it is a Montessori school, and I'm, we have to have a place for that. Our community wants that. And I can tell you that the new plan that has come out, it is doable, but there has to be a lot of work done to transition this community into its new community, and there has to be a commitment to this work to do what we said we were going to do. Thank you.
Anyone else with comments about our testimony clarification? All right, thank you. As a reminder to our community, please feel free to share comments or questions on items with the Board by email at trustees@austinisd.org, and we will have more public comment and public testimony when we get to our voting meeting after the hearing is over. Thank you. So, next up is our presentation on the turnaround plans that the administration has created and is recommending that we send to the Texas Education Agency. Mr. Segura, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, President Boswell. I'd like to invite up Dr. Latonya Anderson, Assistant Superintendent of School Improvement, Jennifer Pace, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary School Leadership, Dr. Angel Wilson, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary School Leadership, Dr. Mary Ann Maxwell, Assistant Superintendent of Academics, and Brandy Hosek, Talent and Strategy Officer. And so, before we get going and before I hand it over to the team, I want to just kind of acknowledge the variety of things that we are working through concurrently. Certainly, the turnaround plans and the work that we've done has been intentional. It is important that we recognize that it has to be in compliance with Texas Education Agency requirements, but it's also occurring at a time when AISD is working through many other things, including budget deficits, program realignments, the ever-shifting accountability system, which I think Trustee Hunter just maybe was referencing, and all in effort for us as a school district to stabilize and move to a period of time when we have strong neighborhood schools that every student can access in Austin. And so, as we transition to the next slide, I want to be really clear that turnaround plans are required. Once a school receives two unacceptable counts, and I'll be really clear, an acceptable count can be gained in a variety of ways. One way is to have three consecutive Ds. Another way, that will give you one, or another way would be just to have one F or two Fs. So, when we think about the accumulation of the ratings, sometimes they go back to 2018, 2019, and we include the history in our turnaround plans. But just to be crystal clear, different combinations of unacceptable ratings can contribute to the count. But once you receive your second unacceptable count, you then are required by order of the commissioner to develop a turnaround plan. In most cases, the turnaround plans are developed in year two, and then you implement in year three, and then you have two years to kind of ensure that the plan works and ultimately break the accountability chain before the fifth year. There are different types of success criteria that the agency offers to be explored. It's also important to note that whenever you have comprehensive changes, as we do, there are often kind of things that you have to consider, and that's where conversations with the agency become very critical. We do not have the ability to submit plans that will be unsuccessful or not accepted. There is a period where they'll review and provide feedback and responses, but ultimately, before we have a plan implemented, it must be accepted, or we risk further escalation via state intervention up to installation of a board of managers, which we'll talk about more in a moment. As we go to the next slide, I want to call out the six different strategies that are available to all school districts across the state of Texas. Whenever you build a turnaround plan, just being really precise, we have six, which include the intensive curriculum and instruction improvement, often called school improvement. Restart, district managed, this is what we have done at Burnett Webb and Dobie. We have a restart, partner managed, which is what, you know, our community might, kind of as a reference point, look to Mendez, and our partner that's operating Mendez currently. We have a closure and reassign, where the students are reassigned to a school that has a C or better rating, and in that instance, the TAP is assigned to that school. We have a new school, district managed. I want to be really, really clear, a new school has to be new, has to be a new scope, meaning new programming, or serve a different student population. And so, you can do that as a district-run school, or you can have a partner do it. So, those are your six options. I also want to be really clear that the system is designed to give school districts fewer and fewer options as they progress along the unacceptable accountability kind of chain, meaning that if you have two UAs, all six are available to you. If you have three, it is unlikely that school improvement will be made available to you because the idea from the agency's perspective is that the intervention should meet the urgency around the unacceptable accountability chain that's been created for that campus. The other thing I want to call out, go back if you don't mind, that if a school receives its fifth unacceptable accountability rating, the commissioner shall, and shall is an important word because he's required to do this, order the closure of the school or install a board of managers. And this is something that is often referred to as a state takeover. This is what we're talking about. And as we talk about in the next couple of slides, the work that we're doing at Burnett Webb and Dobie, those three schools are currently in their fifth year. So, a lot of focus, a lot of intentionality, and we've talked about that in the past, but I want to be sure we all understand that that is currently the case as we speak. As we transition to the next slide, I want to also communicate to our trustees and community that the 1882 contingency and what this means is that a partner that has demonstrated the ability to restart or turn around a campus, going from an F to a C or better, if it's completed by a partner and they've demonstrated that success in the past, an organization like a school district or school district can enter into an agreement and have them run the school. And when that occurs, the state offers a pause, a two-year pause period. Whenever a school is in its fifth year, you can actually have the turnaround plan approved or amended by the agency, and they can allow you to pursue the 1882 contingency plan, and then that fifth year ends up becoming your first of the two-year pause. And so, as we did with Burnett Webb and Dobie back on June 26th, this last, this year, we stated that we have that ability in all of our turnaround plans to the district. I also want to be really clear that we note this in many of the turnaround plans, but not all. And the reason for that is, if you state that the 1882 contingency is available at all the turnaround plans, it could create a challenge for the district to staff that school if it's a school that is receiving a turnaround plan from another school. An example of this would be Bedditch, so Bedditch's turnaround plan is being assigned to Covington. And so, we want to be really clear that in that instance, because Covington currently does not have any UAs, but is receiving the turnaround plan from Bedditch. We do not want the staff or the community to feel as though the 1882 contingency is part of that work because it's different. And we just wanted to be really kind of clear around when we're using it in the language and when we're not. But again, we have that ability regardless if it's in the plan or not. As we go to the next slide, just a little bit about the history of Austin ISD. As I said, these unacceptable accountability chains go back to the 1819 school year, most notably the schools that have four UAs, in this case being Burnett Webb and Dobie. I gave a presentation and I shared with the community, I think last Friday, where I went through every school, and one of the things that was reinforced in that presentation was just the number of schools that shifted in accountability between the '22 and '23 school year, which is when the summative assessment or STAR changed. We had many, many schools, near a dozen, that went from a B to an F. And unfortunately, some of those schools are part of the turnaround plans that we have here. So, when you think about it, kind of the assessment changed, summative assessment changed, these schools dropped down, and they've been building back up, but they still have not been able to break the accountability chain. As you can see here, the system is, we've been working very hard. Just two data points I think worth calling out is, you know, from last year to this year, in '24, '25, we've had an increase in schools that were rated A and a decrease in schools that were rated an F, and I do expect that to go down significantly this year as well. Next slide, please. I'm going to now hand it over to Dr. Anderson to take us through the next set of slides.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Segura. As we reflect on this school improvement work that we are currently existing in with Dobie, Webb, and Burnett, we want to share some lessons that we've learned and how we're going to turn those lessons into opportunities. Lessons learned from our restart efforts reinforce that strong systems, data-driven decision-making, and collaboration are essential for student growth. The effective use of high-quality instructional materials combined with leadership coaching and targeted professional development helps build and sustain teacher effectiveness. Strategic staffing practices, targeted and early recruitment, proactive vacancy management, along with operational planning such as student data trackers and targeted interventions are critical to ensuring coordinated and successful campus improvement. To take what we've learned and transform them into opportunities, I first want to say that the school improvement work is already underway. We have already started those efforts, but we will transform our learned lessons into opportunities. We will strengthen planning, staffing efforts, and student supports. Data-driven decisions will guide instruction, and recruitment and retention will be enhanced through more strategic staffing. Collaborative planning will align general and special education instruction, while family engagement will expand through clear TAP communication, at-home partner support, adult ESL programs, and enrollment assistance, complemented by expanded wraparound services. Instructional improvements will include a revised master schedule, expanded electives and interventions, and continuations of the lighthouse program and professional development will be targeted. Some examples that will show how what we have experienced previously prior to the TAP implementation as to what they will expect going forward are next on my list of things to share with you. The first example would be for the middle school restart. To maximize teaching and learning opportunities, campuses will have increased learning time. The recommended schedule would shift from a four-period day to a five-period day, reducing individual class periods for approximately 90 minutes to 70 while increasing the overall weekly instructional minutes. The revised schedule provides 450 minutes per week for ELA, which is reading and writing and math, and 270 minutes per week for science and social studies. The model will also introduce its one extended-day session per week and expands access to summer school opportunities to support additional learning time for students who need it. Family engagement, is that the next slide, please? Family engagement is also an area that we're going to deepen support for our campuses. We're going to be utilizing the dual-capacity building framework is developed by Dr. Karen Mapp from Harvard University. It is a research-based model for family-school partnerships. The model calls for engagement practices that are learning-focused, relational, collaborative, developmental, and culturally responsive. It shifts the family engagement from isolated events to sustained partnerships that support school improvement. And for the next slide, I will turn it over to Dr. Maxwell.
Good evening. So, an important piece of this work is how we are evaluating what's happening and how we're evaluating the progress of our students and our campuses while all of this is being implemented. And so, the table in front of you is an example really of all the things that we collect throughout the year. Some of them are key benchmarks, and some of them are just ongoing pieces of information that we collect. On the left-hand side of the table, it's more quantitative. On the left-hand side of the table, it's more quantitative in nature, and then moving towards the right-hand side of the table, qualitative in nature, which is really important because we don't want to just depend on strict scoring of assessments that we see, but we also want to make sure that what we're seeing in student work, what we're seeing in practices on the campuses, in PLCs, what we're seeing in classroom practices and student behaviors in classrooms are really matching everything that we're also seeing in student outcomes in their assessments. And so all of these are things that we gather throughout the year. What we, and many of these assessments, of course, we've talked about, are MAP growth, which we collect several times a year. In this instance, really beginning of year and middle of year are very key to see where we are at by the middle of year to know, to make solid projections for where we'll be at the end of year. STAR interim, which is in very early spring, is also another good indicator of that. Curriculum-based assessments are things that we collect along the way, and we can look at overall percent scores for those. Also, an important piece of that is student writing. We collect extended constructed responses and short constructed responses in those assessments and use Common Rubrics to evaluate student writing. And so that's a way that we really look at student work and analyze their writing. Of course, we have campus-level assessments and data trackers that campuses put into those data trackers. Those are teacher-created assessments, they can be formal in nature, they can be very informal in nature, but it's collected at the campus level and shared with us. And of course, we have campus observations. We're out on campuses, district-level walkthroughs, and then we have technical partners that also join us on those walkthroughs. So we have two sets of observational data that we can calibrate on in the classrooms and then also in PLCs. It's a big part of what we see in practices at campuses. The timeline for this, of course, starts with beginning-of-year MAP, our MAP growth assessments. And then what we can do with that at beginning-of-year is really look at just historically where we've been at beginning-of-year with the campuses to kind of check at the beginning where we are. There's ongoing data collection with our curriculum-based assessments and with observations and teacher assessments and the student work that we're seeing happen. And then by middle-of-year MAP and then the early-spring STAR interim, particularly by middle-of-year MAP, we have strong predictions, we can make strong projections for where students will perform on the STAR test at the end of the year. Those middle-of-year MAP projections, MAP STAR projected proficiency scores are anywhere between lower 80s to upper 80s as far as their accuracy for predicting where we'll be in STAR. So depending on the content area, 84% to 85%, up to 88%. They're even just a little bit, in our district, we found, our CDA department has found they're just a little bit more reliable even than the STAR interim projections. And so on the next slide too, what we wanted to make sure, we called out here is all of those systems are really centered around what we've developed for stronger, robust systems for student-centered planning. Our MTSS system is really at the heart of this, really knowing where each student is and identifying what they need and having a response plan. So we start with that data collection in PLCs or CSTs, which are our campus study teams, our campus study teams, lots of acronyms, that are part of our MTSS process. They collect, especially for students that we're worried about receiving, that might need interventions, they collect additional data, progress monitor for our students, and we have action plans for each student. So part of what we provide at the district level, our CDA department provides early how kids have performed historically, where they are at even coming into the year, and then additionally, how they're doing right now. And so those are individualized per student so that we know where every student is, and that's part of the information, really centers around all of that information that's ongoing. So it's not just us looking at this from outside, but it's really dependent on the information that we're receiving and that campuses are gathering about students as well. So from the student experience, they'll start with that beginning-of-year MAP, they'll move on to ongoing assessments like teacher-created, curriculum-based assessments and things happening in the classroom. And then again, by middle-of-year, they'll take MAP again and STAR interim, and we'll have a pretty good projection to either finish the year with intensified interventions or do exactly what that student needs. We get good information from all of those assessments to make sure that we're making good student-centered plans.
Good evening, trustees, President Boswell, Superintendent Segura. Our turnaround approach is intentional. Each campus has been matched with the strategy that best aligns to its needs, capacity, and long-term sustainability. Seven campuses are designated for closure reassignment, moving students to campuses with stronger systems and capacity. That's Barrington, Beddychek, Dawson, Oak Springs, Martin, Wen, Montessori, and Wadane. Five campuses are moving into a restart model using the ACE framework to dramatically strengthen instructional systems. It's Linder, Sanchez, Paredes, Pecan Springs, and Woolridge. And then 12 campuses will implement a school improvement strategy focused on intensive curriculum and instructional coherence for acceleration. That's TA Brown, Go Valley, Hart, Houston, Jordan, Norman Sims, Overton, Padron, Pickle, Sadler Means, Wooton, and Eastside, early college high school included for its federal label. And I want to emphasize that the strategy assigned to each campus was not chosen lightly. These decisions were part of a broader effort to build stronger, more sustainable neighborhood schools across Austin ISD. In determining the most appropriate strategy for each campus, we considered community input, whether the plan would be accepted by TEA under state law, current and projected student enrollment, the condition of facilities and modernization projects, the proximity and performance of nearby schools, and multi-year achievement trends to select the strategy that gives each campus the greatest likelihood of success and that best positions our district to improve outcomes for students long-term. Next slide, please. Most elementary students are being reassigned to, or most students, period, are being assigned to nearby A, B, or C schools. Dawson to Galindo, Oak Springs to Blackshear, the majority of Barrington to Guerrero-Thompson, the majority of Beddychek to Covington, and the majority of Martin to Keeling. Do you have Wadane assigned to Rodriguez, which is currently D-rated but was berated the previous year, and the majority of Wen assigned to Andrews, which is a D-rated campus, and a smaller percentage to Pecan Springs, currently a three UA restart campus? A smaller percentage of Beddychek is assigned to Paredes, currently a three UA campus, and a smaller percentage of Martin assigned to Marshall, a D-rated campus. We approached all student assignment decisions thoughtfully and iteratively with a focus on aligning moves to accountability requirements while keeping students connected to their communities. Receiving campuses were selected based on proximity and available capacity, and we carefully considered accountability ratings and performance trends throughout the process. We made multiple revisions in direct response to community feedback to ensure that the final assignments were both thoughtful and feasible. In cases where students are moving to a restart campus or a D-rated campus, we were intentional about keeping the number of reassigned students manageable and aligned to the level of resources and support the district can provide. Our goal has been and continues to be to create a transition plan that is community-responsive, instructionally sound, and positioned to deliver stronger outcomes for students. To support this, all restart and D-rated receiving campuses will receive substantial additional resources, including enhanced leadership coaching, increased staffing, and targeted academic interventions.
Good evening, trustees and Superintendent Segura. Would like to talk to you a little bit about those investments and resources. So starting all the way to the right on our school improvement, which would be with our two UAs, would, an additional allotment for staffing. It's really important that we provide guidance on that, but also allow our principal of that school to say, these are the positions that are most beneficial to this campus. Every campus is nuanced and every situation is different. And so being able to provide, you know, general allotment of dollars for staffing and have their input is incredibly important. Same goes for our restarts and reassignments in the restart and reassignment column, as you see there. Again, having incredible principal discretion along with their executive directors about what are the, what are some high-leverage positions you can bring on. On some campuses, it may be that a graduation coach is the highest leverage piece that they might need to get through the barrier. On others, it may be that more content interventionists might be what they would choose to bring on. So again, principal autonomy with that. We have reserved an amount of money for professional incentives. I want to call attention to this in contrast to a stipend because there will be goals and metrics attached to these, and the additional monies would be upon achieving those set goals. An additional money for supplemental hours, family supports and resources, and additional discretionary funds for our restarts and redesigns, approximately about a million dollars per campus and for our school improvement, and the ballpark of $350,000 in those particular buckets. Moving on to the actual timeline, this board meeting here is actually bullet one in November, so this is where our Board of Trustees are going to vote on our TAPs. Tomorrow, based on the outcome of tonight, our staff, all staff on all campuses are set to receive a preliminary preference survey. So regardless if they are a TAP campus, TAP-adjacent, or not involved in a TAP whatsoever, all staff members will get a preliminary preference survey. Last year, when we were in a shortened runway to staff up for some of our TAP campuses, we had quite a few folks that said, I absolutely would love to go and do that, but the timeline is short. And so we are going to capitalize on our timeline now with this. Thank you. In December, our principals will be selected by our superintendent to lead our TAP campuses, and in January, we will enter into a hiring freeze that goes for central office, et cetera. There are plenty of positions that our campus-based staff should have the availability to go into those positions, and we will hold those open until they are able to do so to make sure that we are helping every single person that we can find a best fit for next school year. We will progress through the spring with match fairs for those that would like to meet some of our different principals and look at different campuses. We will have approximately three, but we will not open up for external hiring until April. And that takes us through the timeline of the spring.
This slide provides student achievement targets calculated by our CDA department. I just want to point out that the state accountability system rates our campuses based on Domain One or Two and Three. Domain Three is the federal side of our accountability system. For the turnaround plans, we were focused on two A and growth. The district has set clear academic goals to support improvement and achieve a C rating, which breaks accountability. We're focusing on increasing student performance across all grades and subjects. Emphasis will be placed on student growth, which I said before, particularly in Domain Two while supporting emergent bilingual students on Tellpass and ensuring proficiency on STAR assessments. These goals provide a strategic path to improve student outcomes and meet state accountability standards. The turnaround plans are for two years, so this would be our goal at the end of two years. And we do have provided for you the targets for elementary and middle school. And with that, I'm going to allow Ms. Pace to share.
Thank you. Yeah, as you can see, our targets are clear and ambitious, and we are aligning strategies to meet them. We are prioritizing our emergent bilinguals. We are setting firm minimum expectations, and MTSS fidelity is non-negotiable. We are confident in meeting these goals, and we're not starting from scratch. The core systems needed to improve HQIM, curriculum-based assessments, PLC structures, intervention systems are already in place and being strengthened this year. Our TAP monitoring and support systems will accelerate the growth we are already experiencing. Curriculum-based assessments, weekly campus visits, and frequent data reviews allow us to make student and campus-level adjustments quickly and efficiently. Increasing leadership capacity remains a priority in our TAP campuses with improved staffing timelines, dedicated principal and principal supervisor support, and targeted resources at our highest-needs campuses. With our aligned systems, focused support, and consistent monitoring, we're positioned to meet these goals and exit turnaround status.
So we do have one high school that's currently developing a TAP. That's Eastside Early College High School. The campus is currently rated A.D., and it has been identified based on the federal label of comprehensive support and improvement. So performance goals for the high school are aligned to achieving an overall campus rating of a C as well, just like elementary and middle school. The goals focus on increasing student achievement, strengthening growth for all learners, and improving outcomes for student groups that drive accountability. The targets are designed to ensure measurable progress towards state expectation and to position the campus not just for improvement for the moment, but improvement beyond the CSI exit. For the purpose of explaining CSI, it's when a school performs in the bottom 5% of the state. So I just want to make sure that I explained that.
Thank you. Thank you, team. As we wrap this up, I want to be really clear, you know, there's been a lot that's gone into the development of the turnaround plans. And I also want to acknowledge that there are many things that have to be considered, and I thank you, Jennifer Pace, for kind of identifying some of those things. One of the challenges that we have as a school district is that we have many of them that we have to work through, and we have to do them well, implement well, if we are going to ensure that our students get what they need to be successful, and also we appropriately kind of manage the state intervention risk. And so there are a lot of competing elements, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. But I also want our community to know that we are building these TAPs upon work that has been progressing for the last couple of years in a real meaningful way. And so there were a couple of slides that I shared in the beginning that showed the decline in the total number of F schools, the increase in total number of A schools, and just, I think it's important that we talk about this because I don't want our community to think that, you know, this accumulation is somehow something that we cannot go through and be successful at if we do it together. I believe strongly that we can, and there's evidence that the system is responding, and some of those are listed out here. So with that, I want to hand it over to our trustees, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you all so much for the presentation and the work, and thank you Superintendent Segura. Trustees, who has questions?
I was trying to let somebody else go first, but I'm ready. On Slide 11, can we put Slide 11 back up? Thank you. I have a question about, I want to make sure, we've had one grading period, correct? One, nine weeks? Okay. And we've had a boy, correct? Have we had an interim STAR? No interim STAR. Okay, have we had any district-authored benchmarks? How many?
About three per month.
About three. My question is, how many parents understand how well or how not well their students are doing at this point?
Thank you for that question. So the expectation is for campuses to provide reports to parents from the MAP data, they get the progress report data, and we had a day designated in the fall for parent conferences that is something that we had not done previously for secondary that we do now. So we did have a parent conference day, and we will have another one in the spring, and the campuses have been charged with making certain that the parents do understand where their children are academically and how they're progressing.
What is the percentage on attendance for the parents' conferences?
I do not have that data for you right now, but I can get that for you.
Because that's how we got here.
Sure.
And when we're talking with parents, helping them understand, I, as you know, am a teacher educator, and I always tell my teachers, you need to make sure parents understand that a 50% does not mean their kid did 50% of the work. It means that's what they got. They could have done 80% of the work, but you're going to give them a 50% because it's hard to come back from anything else. And I still am not comfortable that our parents, we cannot handle pieces of, they got so much, right? I got a light bill, I got a gas bill. What is this? Are you doing okay in school? Good. Right? We have to, we have to be able, the parents need to know, he is really struggling, she is not on grade level. We have the tutoring. We noticed that she hasn't been coming to tutoring. That's family, like, engagement, right? That's family, like, engagement, right? That's dual capacity. "Hey, sixth-grade parents, ELA, every kid, we're going to send you home with two books. Can you check in on?" And if nothing else, looking out the kitchen, it's like, "Get that book." Right? We have to help them.
Sure.
It's a partnership, and we only have them for so long, and in these schools, we have them on Wednesday a little bit longer, but it's still not enough. So I really, I need some data, I need some numbers, I need to know that parents understand what is going on.
Sure. I'll let you know, or I'll explain what our efforts will be to strengthen this area because we do realize there's opportunity there. The campuses will be required to hold conferences, whether it be virtual, in-person, teleconference, because not all families can come in person, and we realize that. They need to offer multiple ways for parents to engage, number one. We're going to have a tracker. We're going to have the campuses document when they contact parents, how they contacted parents, and what was communicated. Something that we did in the summer for the restarts was train them over this model with APTT, which is Academic Parent Teacher Teams, and that is a model where it's beyond involvement because they don't come in and just, you know, do activities like a literacy night or a math night, but they actually engage in the teaching and the learning process. So there is opportunity there. There has been training on it, but can we improve in that area? Absolutely, which is why this is listed as one of our opportunities. So the introduction has been there. There is a process going forward to where we can monitor more closely.
Okay, thank you. I still have a few more questions, but Mr. Superintendent, I hear what we're saying, and I keep hearing "the campus, the campus." They are at capacity, man. They are doing it all day, every day, and I don't know how we can get support for that because you work all day, and I understand, like, you're going to be making phone calls at night on your way home and that. That's why I have a Google number. But I'm just, let's keep talking about that. Because, I mean, it's November. Okay, on page 16, I just really want to help our, that's the, I think that's Brandy's slide. Chief, what's that slide?
Yes, ma'am.
I know, because when I first got this job, I was not even working, right? And everything was a strain. I wasn't going to yell. Everything was a strain, and I get it, and I'm worried about $300, and I'm over here talking about $5 million. I understand now that those numbers are not even what we need.
That's correct.
A million dollars?
That's correct.
Right? There's like a $300 light bill, and you say, "Girl, I got 10." That's what, and I know we don't have anymore, right? Like, it just isn't, but I need our community to understand that those numbers look big, and I've been talking to some older residents, and they are very frustrated about those numbers, and I had to take time to really talk about that. That's nothing. It takes a lot. It is a heavy lift, and we're not even compensating people for their work. So I really think that that's something we need to be transparent about. Like, I would like to see what it would really take, and this is what we got, right? I think that helps people understand so that we don't wind up in a situation where we feel like we're not being good stewards of the money that they've entrusted us with to teach these children. The, was the interim star, was page 11, page 16? Oh, no, that was it. I think that was just those two pages. That was it.
Thank you.
Okay, who else has questions? Trustee Singh.
Yeah, I really appreciate the work, and I'm glad to see that, you know, we have a dollar amount for investments for each of the schools. And so one question I had was, you know, it's about the likely, I mean, so much of this is about, you know, obviously, the TAPs are there too so that we are sure we invest in the schools that are really needing support. I think one question I, you know, but the other side of it, it's not really just up to us, right? TEA approves these plans. So I'd love for the superintendent to talk a little bit about the TEA success criteria, particularly for the two campuses, Weydane and Wynn. I'm really, I will say, like, I'm good with everything, but I still have a lot of hesitancy around these two, so I want you to reassure me that TEA will accept these because this is a closure and reassign for these two campuses according to TEA's own success criteria, not the law, but TEA, what they have, the way that they have interpreted and created their written success criteria, which I've asked Josh if he could put them on board docs. It says if you're going to do a closure and reassign, that it needs to be an A, B, or C school, but for when, that the kids go to and that adopt that TAP. However, we are actually proposing two campuses, Weydane and Wynn, to do closure and reassign that are going to be going to D campuses. So please help me reconcile this, which I think is a misalignment. If you have talked to TEA and they have given you reassurance, I want more details on that. I think we really, I just, if I'm voting on this, I have to feel very, very, like, 100% confident that we are giving TEA something that we, that they're going to accept, because this is displacing a lot of people, and I know that you care about that. I just want to, I just need to know a little more.
Yeah, so I appreciate the question, and this is something we've talked about for a little while now, and I want to be really clear. I am not going to bring anything to the Board of Trustees that I do not think will be accepted by the agency. I think, to be clear, like, I would never bring something that I didn't think would be accepted. And as you mentioned, the agency does have different criteria, success criteria for this specific response that does get amended quite often. In fact, it was amended not too long ago because it used to be just A and B schools. And so for our families and for our trustees, just about six or eight weeks ago, it got amended, and Cs campuses were added. So the agency does make changes. They are used as guidance. As you said, it's not the law. We do engage with the agency, I would say, on a weekly basis. It is something that was built up whenever we entered into the TA agreed order with special education. So we work with staff, we work with, you know, at times deputy commissioners, and we're asking them all the time, you know, given the comprehensiveness of the work that we're taking on, the number of schools that we are providing TAPs for, you don't have the ability in every instance to be as responsive as you'd like to be regarding the criteria. Meaning if it was just A or B, then you might end up having to move students across the school district. Now that you've added C, you have more flexibility, but you still don't have the ability to meet that everywhere. And so the guidance from the agency has been, if the school district, AISD, is taking on a comprehensive plan, which we are with all of these, coupled with the programmatic moves and ultimately the boundary changes, which, boundary changes which are coming, they look at the whole. And so what we've been really clear about is if we're going to move students to a school that is a D, we would look at the history. In Rodriguez's case, last year, they were a B, and they do not have a UA. They have a D, not a UA count, they just have a D. And then we have to describe in our turnaround plans the supports that we're going to provide those schools that are receiving students that are currently a D. And based on the stability that we've seen at Rodriguez, because we're talking about specifically Weydane, you know, we have extreme confidence that they'll be able to meet the needs of those students and ultimately receive a rating that'll break the accountability chain. For Wynn, Andrews and Pecan Springs, there are two different elements here, I think, that are worth talking about. The first is the minority, as far as student population, going to Pecan Springs. Pecan Springs is also going through a restart itself, and so from the agency's perspective, those students going to that school, that will be addressed, and those students will receive what they need, and you're effectively kind of ensuring that we are meeting the students' needs by way of that restart. So that kind of helps address that student population that would be moving to Pecan Springs. For Andrews, given that it is a D as well, it's very similar to what we talked about with Weydane, where we need to ensure, okay, so what is the history? Been at the school? What resources are you going to deploy? What other options are available to the district? What A, B, or C schools were considered, and why were they not considered? And so we go through all of that. We collaborate as a team, we ask questions, we look at different solutions. I will tell you that we've made adjustments already. Weydane was a school that, you know, what we heard from community, and one of the things that I heard from trustees, was the split between Houston and Rodriguez was one that introduced a risk of going to an F school, right? And so we made that change, but we don't have the ability necessarily to move wholly into another school that is closer than Rodriguez. So Palm ends up being, you know, could you move them wholly into Palm, which is further away? And so, like, all of that kind of comes into it, but I would say that we have committed to providing the resources wherever our students go. They are guidelines, they are not stated in law or education code, and I feel confident with the various conversations we've had as a team with the agency that they will be accepted. As far as do we have anything in written form, that is not how the agency typically works. They share with you their ideas, they will give you feedback, but they often don't put things in writing, I think, just because that's just how they work. But we have had lots of conversations, and I'm happy to share with you the dates and when those occurred, the timelines, I mean, all those things, but I have a confidence that it'll be accepted, if that's helpful.
Okay, and then, okay, I appreciate that. I think it's really important, for the transparency, so I appreciate that a lot. Sorry, I really, so, okay, so that's, let me let all that marinate. I did want to go back to something that Dr. Maxwell talked a little bit about was the correlation between the MOE, the middle-of-the-year maps, and the STAR test, about 80 to 85%. So even though we're not talking about the three middle schools that currently have TAPs today, I think it is useful to think about, bring them into the conversation to get a sense of how they've been doing, to help us understand or gain some reassurance, confidence in our work with all of these other TAPs going forward. So I raised this at the last board meeting and have submitted a couple of trackers. I did receive your email, haven't had a chance to read it, Dr. Maxwell, so I know that you... But anyway, can we hear a little bit about how we're doing with, you know, DOBE and Web and Burnet?
Sure. I'll start and then hand it over to Dr. Amerson and Dr. Maxwell. One of the things that I would say is, we were attempting to kind of bring in the lessons learned based on what we observed as we started up, restarted DOBE, Burnet, and Web. And one of the things that I think really impacted us was the fact that that was approved on June 26, right? So June 26 is when we approved it, which meant that the hiring of the principals, the hiring of staff, all occurred in a period when there are very, very few staff available, and almost every educator has found a home within central Texas. And so I just want to state that because I don't know if it's going to be easy to correlate, you know, necessarily, kind of how Burnet, Web, and DOBE have been going because we had to catch up because of the compression from 23, 24, 25 accountability and when the board approved that TAP versus when we started. We literally had two and a half months, two months runway to do it. In this instance, we'll have, you know, almost seven or eight. So I'll start there, and then I'll hand it over to Dr. Amerson and Dr. Maxwell to take us maybe through more of the data points. I do want to also tell our trustees that, based on that feedback, I do want to come back and do a deep dive, either at the board information session in December or the board voting meeting, to go through the three schools in entirety, in its entirety. And the reason for that being is that there are some milestones that we're going to receive over the next three weeks, some data points, that'll really help us understand. Because right now, what you're going to hear is an incomplete picture because the middle of year, like, we haven't collected, there's just things, as Trustee Hunter said, that you're still in the first, you finished the first reporting period, and you're in the middle going forward. So I just wanted to kind of caveat that because there are some data points, like, right around the corner that will really tell you what you want.
It's a different timeline, and so given all that context, I just really have been asking for a while what our beginning of year this year was for those three campuses versus last year. Are they the same, better, or worse?
So the timing of that question makes, it provides a little bit of difficulty. The reason is that the MAP assessment changed a little bit this year, the assessment itself did. It is still very, very similar. It's an adaptive assessment that students take, and it, you know, kind of goes in and out of different ranges to kind of see what they know. They changed that a little bit to be more, the questions that come up, the next adaptive questions that come up are more focused on grade level content.
Yeah.
To make sure that they are fully mastering that grade level content before it moves them up. And so the test itself changed a little bit, and with the change of the test, they also updated the national norms. So the norms were from pre-COVID, and so they updated the national norms to how the nation is performing on this test in the last several years versus pre-COVID. Overall, performance in the nation has declined, and so they've adjusted some of the norms of the assessment. What we tend to look at are student achievement percentiles a lot. We'll talk about this a little bit more in our board report for literacy and new mercy. But it's, that also changes kind of the performance level of these students on the assessment. So math is one of the ones that has been most affected by the changes in the assessment and the norms as well. It's not as much for language arts and for our restart campuses. Now this year, we're actually doing it for science as well. So with all that said, comparisons from, that we typically make, from which we've talked about a lot, we should compare boy to boy and moy to moy. It's a little more difficult to do that right now because of the changes in the assessment and the changes in the norms of the test.
Well, I mean, I can wait till December. It sounds like the answer's probably no. Like, they're probably not, because I imagine if they were better, you would have been like, "Yes, we're doing better."
Well, we're actually talking, we had a couple of meetings this week with NWA to further understand the changes and the norms so that we can adjust what we're looking at to make sure that we're on target and we're interpreting it correctly. So it's a little harder to say yes or no, especially when it comes to math, because the performance is actually different, not just from the new assessment, but in different grade levels. So it's kind of a complicated answer that we're working on right now.
Yeah.
What we do expect is the STAR projected proficiency will still be very much on target, especially that the test has narrowed a little bit more to grade level, not completely, but a little more focused on grade level. It kind of even tightens what they are tested on, which should give us even a stronger prediction for what that end-of-grade, end-of-year grade level assessment should be.
I appreciate that explanation and context. So it sounds like we don't, we just don't have the right information yet.
We don't have it yet.
It hasn't been interpreted all the way through. So I will be patient, but I am really looking forward to seeing that data and just really deep diving into staffing and everything else because I think that's going to be a model. And the reason I raise it here in this conversation is because I think our community is going to expect that for these 24 TAPs as well.
For the restarts, perhaps, the two UAs, right?
Maybe not as much for those, but, I mean, honestly, that's probably something that we as a board should talk about, what we expect as we track all of this. And then the other question is one also that I had brought up last time, which was around the transfer ARDS. So in our TAP plans where students are going to be moved to another campus, do we, I would like to know how many students are going to have to have a transfer ARD? And do we have the capacity to do that?
Dr. Charlie, Charlie's making her way up to the, she's stuck.
Thank you. So as far as requiring an ARD, we are going to be requiring ARDs for any student who is currently receiving a centralized placement, and that placement would be changing. Families are also welcome to request an ARD, and the campus will definitely hold that ARD, so that will be an option. And we're going to look at every student as an individual student and really look at their needs and the determination of whether an ARD will need to be held. Keep in mind that ARDs are, annual ARDs are happening all during the year as well. So some families may want to address or ask questions during ARDs that are being held in the spring as well, but may not want to hold a separate ARD that may be, you know, just extra stress on a family to have so many meetings scheduled in such a short period of time.
Yeah, and trustee, I'm sorry, Dr. Charlie, I think it'd be helpful to maybe describe how the platform and the data system we have in place now kind of helps us ensure that every student is getting what they need in the time that we have, and that you have the resources to ensure that if any new ARDs that would not be otherwise completed because of the change, we have the staff to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I just need a real concise, like...
Yes, we have the resources.
Like, do we have a sense of how many? Are we talking about 100 kids? Are we talking about 1,000 kids?
So we're looking at about, are you talking about specifically turnaround? Are you looking at consolidation?
With the turnaround plans?
It would have to be for a reassignment or a closure. Because if it's, because the student would have to be moving. Because if it's, a student would have to be moving, a move.
Correct. So we're looking at about 850 students right now and that number may fluctuate just depending on the number of students receiving special education, but we're looking at about 850 students receiving special education that would be reassigned.
Okay, and then out of those 850, how many of them are required to have an ARD before the transfer? All of them or just?
So all students are required to have an annual ARD and you, so you're asking which students would be a centralized placement?
Centralized placement.
For those students that are receiving a centralized placement, that, I can get that information to you, I don't have that exact number on hand, but I can get that information to you as well. And again, families can request an ARD if they would like to, to, you know, further to discussion in ARD, they could also request just a meeting to discuss what that, you know, if they had additional concerns. But our team is going to work very closely with staff and with campuses to develop guidance for the sending campus and also the receiving campus again, so that we have a fluid transition plan for students.
I appreciate that a lot.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so the term is centralized placement for the students that are?
Those are the ones that would be, would.
Would have to have one.
Correct.
Okay. And, and we don't know about how many those are out of the 850. Is it a large, I mean, I guess you'll tell me.
It's a small number of students. It's likely around 10% of those students. It's not a large number, but I can get the exact metrics to you within, we'll probably write after the fall break.
Okay, thank you.
So, less than 100 or around 100.
Okay, and you feel like confident that we have the capacity superintendent to do those?
Oh, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
That's my main question.
Yes.
Okay, and we're planning for that and?
Oh yeah, no, we're, we are staffed up in a way to, to do this work that we've never been, I mean, honestly. And with the systems in place, we're better positioned to support our students than we never had before and that's just the honest truth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee De Yosté and then we'll come to trustee Quintana.
Yeah, I just want to ask a clarifying question. For the other students that are not centralized placement, how are we modifying their paperwork to reflect the new campus?
So within our system, when students move to a new campus, that information will be reflected in the digital management system. So that, that information is documented through the system and it's aligned through ERP. So ERP is where all of our student information systems are housed and that information automatically will be updated when students are enrolled at their receiving campus.
Well, but my question is, the student has an IEP, it has the name of the campus on it. How are you changing the name of the campus without an IEP meeting?
How are we changing the name of the campus?
Yeah, on the IEP, it's going to say the student has served at a specific campus. If we close that campus, the literal IEP still has them assigned at the last campus. So how do you switch them to the new campus? Don't you have to have an ARD to confirm the new placement?
Well, the, the ARD committee is going to determine the services and the programming, but not the location of the services.
Right, my concern is that any parent go through initial placement, when you discuss the services, they're going to ask where are the services going to be offered? Like that, that's how a centralized placement would come up, right? Is that you would say there's an option for service on another campus, but these parents aren't going to have that decision. It's just going to say they've been reassigned to a new campus.
So again, for those students that are receiving a centralized placement, we will be conducting an ARD meeting and we will be identifying that campus in the spring. So the families will know where their child will be placed if it's not at the reassigned campus.
Right, and so for the other students, that's what I'm saying is like they're not going to have had that discussion. So, I mean, just in the literal sense, if, if we still had all paper IEPs, I get that you have a digital management system, the student would have an IEP, it would say the name of the school on it and when they would go to a new school, the new school would have to change that IEP. They'd have to write an IEP with the name of the new school on it. I get that we have a digital document system, but the family still has a procedural process to go and change that you don't, you can't just change the name on the IEP is my understanding. You have to go through the process to make any amendment to that document.
I mean, we'll, we'll work with our legal department on that as well as IT as far as the process of what that could look like in our digital management system. And we'll consider that. I, I don't believe that we would need to have an ARD to change the reassignment of the school within that ARD paperwork. But again, we'll work with legal and with IT to review that.
Okay, I, I mean, I just have a concern on procedurally how we were going to do it.
Thank you for lifting that.
Trustee Quintana?
Yes, hi, thanks y'all. I have just a couple of clarifying questions in general about restarts. It is my understanding that if a school, I'm sorry, reassigned, if a school is going to, to be closed and reassigned to another school, that there were, should be no more than 20 students in each class in that new reassigned school. Is that true?
Are you talking about the staffing plan associated with the, the new allocations based on what we're investing and how we're investing?
I'm asking about the classroom size.
Yeah, it's, it's not a requirement. In our documents, one of the things that we've committed to is if it's a restart or a three UA, we are changing the student to teacher ratio, but it's not a requirement.
So then what will be the, the new student to teacher ratio at Rodriguez?
Can we please put the slide number nine back on? Thank you so much. Thank you trustee Quintana. So this is a proposal so for our three UAs, you can see by, by level and right now with what we're talking about, we're strictly addressing elementary, middle, but right now we staff at a 1 to 24 K through four with a waiver. We would have a 1 to 20 ratio. It would not be a legal requirement of any sort, but we will try to keep those ratios much lower than what we normally do for our three UA campuses. And then for our seat count into our formula for middle school, right now we staff at a 1 to 29 in a large formula that has weights in it, we would drop that ratio, that factor down to 25.
Okay, I guess I'm just trying to do some math here. So if Wadain currently has 342 students and Rodriguez currently has 345, that equals And if we were doing 20 students max, like we're trying to do with 27 classrooms available at Rodriguez, that would be 540 students. So we're, so we're not going to do the 1 to 20 ratio.
We are going to try to keep it as low as we possibly can with the space that is available on that campus.
Right, but we have like numbers, like concrete numbers right now, so.
Of course, for today's enrollment, absolutely.
Okay, so I, yeah, I guess, are you saying that we can't exactly say what the ratio is because we don't know what the enrollment will be in the fall?
So specific to, to Rodriguez, Wadain, is Wadain coming in as a two UA or is it a three?
Three.
Okay, so, so it's going to Rodriguez. Given that ratio, we would have to, first of all, we need to analyze the space in there. I do believe that there are some classrooms that are being, not being used as efficiently. I've spoken to Christine Seampour about this, she's the expert on actual space, but we would have to keep, you are correct, if we are strictly out of space and we have more students than we, than we have ratio or space for, for a 1 to 20, we will have to go to a 1 to 21, we would have to go to a 1 to 22. But the, the effort would be to keep it as low as we possibly could with the space that we had.
Okay. I also want to talk about the number of kids who are receiving special ed, special education in both schools. They, let's see. I have the numbers. So special education services for the combined needs of 92 Rodriguez students and 83. And so when we're talking about rooms and capacity, I'm worried that we're, we're not going to have the capacity to, to give our special education students the room that they need when we combine 92 students with, with 83 students.
Yeah, so one of the things trustee Quintana is, is that, you know, many of our students as a district, about 74%, those students that receive special education services are in the general education classroom. So the 1 to 10 ratio that we're, that I think that would trigger a modified allocation by classroom would be like life skills, it would be a different program. And so I would, I don't want to speak to just merging the two and assuming that that student population would be a 1 to 10 ratio because that's not how, that's kind of not, not how we operate and kind of support students who receive special education services. And so I'd have to look at the student populations to be able to tell you precisely how many of those students would actually contribute to a 1 to 10 allocation, 1 to 10 student teacher ratio versus the recommended staffing ratio that was just on the screen. So is that, because most of the students will be in general education classrooms, but I'd have to break that down and look specifically at the students' services at those camp, that campus.
Could I, if I could jump in, I mean, that does touch on to a question then is without having looked at, you know, so we're going to still have resource scores, SBS and life skills that all potentially would need their own room. And so part of my concern is within looking at all of those pieces, you know, those could resent, result in centralized placements that we're not going to, that we don't have any prediction of yet. And so, you know, as an example, you combine those two campuses and you might say we actually need two life skills and we can't fit two life skills on the campus. And so now you're going to have to centrally place half of those life skills kids somewhere else. And I haven't seen any data that's showing how we can anticipate that. All our staffing stuff has been saying that we're going to look at that in the spring, but without having those numbers, you know, there's the potential for a lot of kids that are going to need to get moved around.
So I, I think this is where the refinement campus by campus, I mean, when we, students come into, we, different student populations as they matriculate through our campuses, we make adjustments all the time. You know, where we add pre-K, maybe we make an adjustment. We really tried to modify our, our space allocations based on student need, right? And we've adjusted the ratios to ensure that every school has an allocated number of classrooms, even though they may not have, need that number of classrooms, right? So that's why overall utilization was actually dropped down when we started this entire process, because we were kind of assuming whether it was the case or not that we were going to protect these rooms for these types of services. So I, I hear you and I think that's in the details as far as, you know, how many students may need to move or not move. And, you know, we can, you know, provide that data. I guess the question I have is, you know, when it comes to student movement, you know, we're doing our best with the number of facilities, resources, funds like that we have and everything is competing against each other. And so I can provide a balance of what that looks like, what it could look like, but it really comes down to getting the principals together, getting all of our resources together and then planning student by student. And at this point, without a vote, without, you know, and the number of the scale that we're talking about, I think the detail you want, we're just not yet able to provide. But we know that total student population, we're confident they would fit at Rodriguez. Rodriguez not too long ago was much, much larger than it is now. And we do know that certain schools don't use a space that, the way that maybe it could be used. And so what we can do is, is provide more detail around that. I'm confident that we have the overall space, but space does move and get, does get used in different ways all the time, but we can provide that clarity moving forward.
Yeah, I guess the, the question that leads me with is given the, the context of the concerns and just physical space, you know, if we get put in that position, are we, it seems like we would have a choice between moving sped students to a different campus or putting more, raising the cap on how many gen ed students are in a, in a room. You know, I'm just thinking of my own experience when I was teaching, I mean, you got to have a room for a resource.
And that's why the ratio, I mean, we're committing to dropping down the ratio for general education classrooms to the best of our ability. But, but you're exactly right, it's in there as recommended, right? It's not, so what's fixed is the number of seats that we have, the building. We looked at splitting up the student population to address this concern and what we heard from community is don't split, don't split the school up. We heard that from trustees, not, don't go to enough school. So we, even though it'd be modernized school at Houston. So we, we had a solution that addressed that space and then we took it back and now we're going to a school that wholly can fit Rodriguez, that's closest to Rodriguez. And so I think this is just an example of how all these things come to play together and the real recognition that in the area, you have lots of surplus seats. And, and so, you know, I would just say that's, that's kind of what we're going through right now is what we've been going through as we kind of arrive at this final solution or recommendation, I would say.
Yeah, I think just the distinction is that for some of the sped families, it's not going to be necessarily about seats, it's actually about the whole room because just, you know, the grouping is slightly different. And I think it would be helpful if, you know, we're making some sort of guarantee that we're not splitting up individual sped populations from campuses, because I think that's part of the concern around the centralized placement question that's still open ended, is whether programs are going to get moved around because not every elementary is going to have SBS or scores or.
I would also offer back to the general education question, trustee Quintana and trustee De Yosté, because of space issues, can also be creative with additional paraprofessionals in the room to help lower the ratio and, and if we were in that situation, if we were not able to expand by another teacher, we can certainly put another adult in the room, a TA, that would help with assisting in that room. There's different ways to work through that.
Okay. I think those are all of my questions for now, thank you.
Trustee Kaufman?
Thank you. I just want to understand a little bit more about the space or the projections in southeast Austin. And so I know that we have some communities where our student population is growing and others where it's shrinking. What are the, what are the demographers' projections for that area in terms of the capacity for the schools in the next couple of years?
Well, I'd have to pull up the.
Has that been considered in this?
Oh yeah.
Say that, that the capacity is there right now and it will be there in the next few years as apartments build or as?
There is a declining enrollment in this entire area. We had proposed until we made the change in timeline, even the closure adjacent to this school, which is Palm, you have a surplus of seats in this area, a significant number of seats. And so, you know, and as we talked about the comprehensiveness of the work, that's one of the things we're trying to balance out. So yeah, there's, there is a surplus. I can, trustee Kaufman, if you give me, you know, maybe 30 minutes or 10 minutes, I can pull up kind of the general, the estimate for the area, but we do have a surplus.
When you've probably already looked at this, I'm, I'm looking specifically at the alternative plan presented by the Wadain community where it mentions the additional apartments being built in the area that would be zoned to the school. And it mentions the closing of a charter school nearby that could potentially reintroduce students to our district that we could capture in a positive way, not if we were to have spaces available. So just wanted to know if you've considered those factors and what the response is?
Yeah, so the demographer did meet with developments and developers that had been, had progressed the project far enough along a certainty that the project would make. And so I know consistently they did that across the process. We actually asked them to go back multiple occasions whenever we heard from community that there was something missing. I think sometimes we think the student yield is going to be bigger than what it is, you know, and we're talking about, you know, over 1,000 students that are empty seats in this area. And so with an apartment complex, with a closure of a school, like we would still have plenty of capacity. And so I think it's just kind of order of scale. Now I can go back and if you'd like me to, I can give you kind of the details, but we've been consistent about ensuring that our demographer went back and asked the questions. We've identified in the report which developments we are considering and if we weren't, the reason why. I can't speak to the adjacent development, I'll have to look it up, but in either case, you're going to have plenty of seats. That's just the reality of, of what we've seen in that part of Austin.
And just in a, in the big picture of capacity of the district to manage these plans and to support communities into, into making the improvements, what would be the impact of the board accepting some of the closure proposals and rejecting one or two of the others in terms of capacity?
Well, I think about the whole. We have, you know, over 20,000 empty seats, we have a deficit budget that continues to grow. We're trying to align feeder patterns, we're trying to balance enrollment. And so if any. And so if any one of these were converted from a reassignment to a restart, then we would be then investing the money into a restart so that the staff, the, everything would restart it over and it would be one less closure, right? So the, the reduction in cost offset would not exist, right? So instead of closing 10 schools, you would close nine, if you closed, if there was another one that didn't, the board didn't want to do, that would be eight. And so the question comes back to the board, you know, the expectation, I think, from the board to the superintendent was to do all of this and try to get to a balanced school system. And I would just say that every time you add a school back on, the question becomes, are we going to take another school off? Is there another resource that, that we can identify that would bridge that gap? Because the reality is that you still are going to have seats even with these schools coming offline. And so that would be the impact. It would be us not being able to get to a place where we do have a stable school system. It would take longer and I don't know what those actions would be, but I think you'd probably have to begin to reintroduce things that have been previously taken off the table at some point, not necessarily now, but you'd have to do that.
And what would you anticipate the impact on that particular school? So you've said that these decisions on reassignment or restart were based on specific factors affecting that school on a variety of things. It's not, you know, those were independent decisions based on the unique nature of each school and their situation. So if you're recommending reassignment for a particular school and the board were to say, we will not vote in favor of reassignment, but we would vote in favor of, of a restart, what would you anticipate the impact on that school and community and the students to be in terms of our capacity to support that school individually? Not the big picture, not the boundaries, not the, but for that school? If we're thinking about each of these turnaround plans as an individual component that a school needs to be successful in the standard accountability system?
We're talking about a district managed restart because we've lost opportunity to do a charter restart, just to be clear. That would be the thing that would reduce the risk the most, given the two-year pause. But I have heard from our trustees consistently and from our community, that's not something that we want to do or should be doing if there are other options. And I heard that from this community as well when I've been there and I've also heard it since then with other community members in the area. So a restart, you know, it would turn over the staff, we'd have to meet the expectations and from the agency, you know, and start that work. So is it possible? I mean, of course, I mean, we can, we can, we can do those things. I would have to very quickly, within hours, you know, try to do almost the impossible and change the documents to upload, you know, and I think we, you know, you ultimately get to a place where we're not removing risk necessarily across the system, you know, from a budget risk perspective, from implementation risk, that's one more restart that we have to work through and that's, we will do it, but I just want to be honest, like, you know, these are hard, these are very hard to do and we're doing lots of them already and doing one more where we hadn't planned on doing one. Again, it's the board's will, but it would, I don't want the board to think that it'll necessarily ensure that the system as a whole will be, that will meet our overall goals. And I understand, you know, I understand the, how Wadaan and the community, the position, the adjacency to, to everything and I think that's why my focus has really been about, you know, Mendez and trying to figure out how to kind of take Mendez back and position a strong school at Mendez in the future. And I know these are very connected and so I just want you to, our trustees to know, like that's how we're thinking about it. It is hyper-specific to the school, it is regional with all the other schools. What I wouldn't want to have happen is this instance where Mendez and Wadaan are both not there, right? That's something I don't think our board would want, I certainly don't want that. But the reality is, we do have lots of empty seats and the school has accumulated the unacceptable accountability ratings that require an action by the, by us or the agency will do it for us.
And just to be clear, I'm not asking about that one particular campus, I'm really asking generally about the decision-making. I really want, you know, I understand that we have to make decisions for the whole district and that every decision has an impact and a ripple effect. But at the same time, I also understand that every one of these campuses has an individualized plan that's meant to be community developed and in partnership with the community and specific to the actual needs of that campus. And so I just want to ensure that we're going into this, looking at each campus individually and not, you know, at the same time as recognizing we have constraints around that. But that it's, that, you know, we were looking at this campus individually, that this campus plan has been identified as the one that's most likely to lead to long-term success for the community and for the students that it serves, et cetera. And that's just what I really want to probe on is just ensuring that these, that when we vote for these, that we're voting in good conscience that this is what's going to be, that we're not sacrificing a community for the greater good, that we're finding solutions that will benefit every community while sustaining the district for the community. And to be clear, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that's the commitment, we, saying that's, that's the communication that we need and that's the commitment and promise we have to make to the district and we have to say that that is genuinely what is happening. Or we need to change the plan, one or the other, right?
Yeah, and I think, I think our board is seeing, I think our, I hope our community is seeing, like, when we can adjust, we do. I mean, we've made adjustments on many of these turnaround plans already. Our community has shared with us things that will work, things that won't work, but there are also constraints that we're operating in. And if, if the objective of the board is to not make those requirement of the superintendent, then, then that won't be the case. But I have to get to a balanced budget, I have to address the accountability risk, I have to do, address the TA agreed order, I have to do all of these things at a point when we have limited resources. And there are certain things that I can adjust and modify and improve on and I think we've done that well where we can. And there are some that, as much as I want to do it, I know that it, it'll be difficult for us to implement or it ultimately isn't going to move us towards that collective goal, even as much as I want to do it. And there are lots of schools and lots of changes in these plans that, that I'm really sorry about. I mean, I feel devastated that we have to do this, but I just, we just don't have options. I mean, we are very limited in what we can do. The question I would have is, you know, if, if the number of seats and the number of turnaround plans and the number of accountability risks that we're managing are not as, of the same concern as before, then I would need to know that. I would need to be, to be clear as far as my direction goes because I've been trying to manage all of these collectively on behalf of AISD and, and there are just some where I can make adjustments and I've, I heard from the community that a split wasn't going to be work. I heard that, don't send students to an F-rated campus, even though it would be modernized. We made that adjustment, we, we wanted the school to be together, we, we made it work at Rodriguez, based on the feedback we've had with the agency, it works. You know, and so that, that's still is responsive, but not necessarily back to a completely different change in the plan. And so, so I just want to kind of note that because we are really trying to be responsive. It's just, there are some things that we can't do without changing our overall objectives as a system for like the years. That's just...
Thank you. And I just repeat, I'm not asking just about Wadaan, you know, I'm also asking about Barrington and Beddick and Winn and Dawson and Martin. Like, I just want to ensure that we're communicating honestly and clearly to the communities that we are doing the very best we can to provide the plan that will be, help their community to be successful. Yeah, thank you.
I have a clarifying question from our experience. When we were here last year or doing the same thing, the call was save our school. And the community wanted that and we said, yes, community does not understand what that meant. The thing that they loved about their school, their principal, their teachers, that's the thing that has to turn over. We think, well, this teacher's a really great teacher, so she's going to stay, but that's not the measurement at which teachers are looked at. And I really, it is still breaking my heart that when I, you know, talk to people at DoB and they're like, well, you know, Miss Santos is not here anymore and, oh, she's over at a whole nother school, but she's still doing something over here after school. I, there's no good choice, all right? Literally, that's a Sophie's Choice. You restart the school, the thing that you love about the school, you don't have anymore. I, I don't, like, I don't have an answer for that, but I really think it's important that the community understand that because my community did not, right? They did not know the teachers, the ones that were working the hardest, didn't meet this description that we get, right? And then the principal has to be a special kind of principal. I don't know if that's, if it's like different because this is a TAP and, I mean, this was like more UAs, but I just want people to really understand, like, what that means.
Yeah, I think trustee Hunter, thank you for that. And when I talked about the strategies, the fact that Wadaan, and I think we're still talking about Wadaan, is a three UA, the district managed restart would include precisely what you said. We'd have to ensure that 60% of the educators in the core instructional areas met the definition of highly effective. Again, not Matthias's definition, not the state, not these people's definition, it's the state of Texas's definition. So there are a number of years of experience, TIA designation, nationally board certified, there are things that, that we have to ensure our educators have in those classroom spaces. And then we have to ensure the principal has demonstrated the ability to turn around a campus and that is a very clear definition, going from an F to a C, right? That is, and that is not something that many principals have, right? It's just not. And the state also kind of looks at the administration that's there, who was there, when, when the school accumulated the unacceptable accountability counts. And so all of that requires effectively a pretty significant turnover. Now, we work really hard to make sure we have familiar faces, we look at classified staff that can stay, we look at essential areas, like all the other staff that we can stay, we want to keep them, but it is a different school when, when this gets done, it just is.
I just, I just want people to understand, like, if that's what you want, understand that's what you're getting, right? I just, I just really want that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Quintana.
Well, while we're speaking about staff, I guess I would just like to ask and clarify these numbers that I have in front of me, that at Wadaan, there are five teachers with TIA designations, 10 teachers who are highly effective or distinguished, and that about 91% of the staff is certified, 96% is teaching within a certified field and around 88 have three or more years of teaching.
I don't have those specific metrics in front of me, but I can confirm your first measure about the TIA designations because it's a part of our list of how many teachers across the district were qualifying and I have that by campus. But to be clear, there's TIA designation and then there's TAP eligibility, which is a slight expansion of that. For Wadaan specifically, and I know this because I was speaking to the principal yesterday, there are, I believe, eight teachers that meet that expanded, within that expanded eligibility, eight core. And then there are an additional eight, non-core being essential areas, pre-K, et cetera, as defined by TAP standards.
That meet?
That meet TAP eligibility.
Okay, so that's 16.
Correct.
And then they have 12 classified staff and TAs, so would they have to meet any sort of requirement?
They do not have to meet any sort of requirement. We want, we want a blend, we want familiar faces for our kiddos in all space.
Okay, so that's, so that's good, so that's like 28. And then they have two people in the front office, five people in the cafeteria, three people on the custodial staff. So as, as far as the turnover and, and familiar faces, I mean, it's a concern, it's heartbreaking to have to let our teachers and principals go, but I just want to clarify that this wouldn't be an entire sweep
Correct.
of the school.
Yeah, so I would say trustee Quintana, yes, that's exactly right, which is why I was referring to the 60% as the minimum criteria. The one thing I want to say is, we are going to hire a principal for the school if it was to be a restart. And one of the things we need is for that principal to be able to identify his or her, like, leadership team. It's really important, you know, if you just bring a leader in without the ability to hire anybody that is going to support them, it's a challenge. So I, you're right, it's not a complete sweep, but I also don't want the presumption after this meeting concludes that every single person you listed would, would perhaps remain because there would be some space there for that principal to make his or her own decision regarding like, you know, administrative staff that are closest to them. I mean, this is one of the things we've observed, right, wrong or indifferent, is that if that leader isn't able to hire the people that they're going to rely on to move the school, that it doesn't always work out. And we have lots of examples of that in Austin ISD. So I just wanted to, you're right, but I just wanted to kind of put that little note just because that's how it might work out. But yeah, it's not a clean sweep, it never is, we don't want it to be, honestly. We want familiar faces, we want our staff to feel welcome, we want students to see faces that they, they know and love.
I appreciate that and I appreciate that clarification because that's the first time I think that I've heard that little nuanced point. But, you know, I think they have a lot of great teachers to choose from, whoever the principal is. I know that, was it in 2019, Wadaan was a B-rated school? I'd be curious to know how many of the teachers that were teaching at that time are still there? Because, you know, I think that our accountability system has changed a lot, how we test our students has changed, but I would be surprised if the quality of our teachers have changed if they were a B-rated school six years ago.
We can provide that data to you.
So just the number of teachers who were there then that, that are there now, in the areas that were grade level, like third grade and above, who contributed to the rating? Okay.
Thank you. Anything else? Trustee Singh.
Okay, so I just have to just pause for a moment and just appreciate that Wadaan went up from 49 to 57 last year this year. And I know that other schools, I know Wanda's story. You happen to know, you probably have this memorized, but I just feel like we have to recognize that many of these schools are actually on an upward trajectory.
So trustee, trustee Singh, I'm glad you brought that up because I gave a presentation that I shared with the entire community that like kind of listed out the progression of each school. I mean, and I, you're right, I mean, these schools have gone from, you know, 40s to low 50s to high 50s. It's very frustrating because we have, I think, near a dozen or between, about a dozen that are between 59 and 58. They have a 59 or a 58 and they're right there. And I, what I also tell communities, and this is what is very frustrating also, is that the agency sees an F and it's an F. But you're, you're exactly right and this is why in the video that I sent, I was very clear and I even talked about like the progression and the move and how the, many of these schools were Bs in 22 and then were an F in 23. And then 23, 24, 25, they've been climbing out and they are so very close. So you're exactly right. It's heartbreaking.
It's so infuriating. I mean, so Winn went from a 45 to a 57. I mean, it's just, I should stop talking, but I'm really sorry that this is the situation, y'all. Like, this is really terrible and from what I'm hearing, you know, if we were to convert Wadaan and went back to a restart instead of a closure and reassign, we'd have to replace some of the most important people on those campuses
Correct.
to do a, to do a restart and meet the TAP requirements set by TEA.
There would definitely be a movement of staff, but as trustee Quintana said, not all staff.
Not all staff, but...
And it depends on the school. I mean, honestly, some schools don't have the same numbers. I can't, I don't want to speak to specifically how many Winn does versus Wadaan, but every school has a very different number. So some could be much less than, you know, the seven plus the remainder could be two or three, some could have a much higher percentage, it just depends.
Okay. And the other quick point I wanted to just bring up is, I do want to thank, thank you and the staff for, for the adjustments you made to Sanchez and Pickle and was there another one?
Yeah, there's, yes. There are several, yeah. So Pickle, Wooten, Sanchez, you know, kind of Winn Montessori, working through that and but that's maybe part of the conversation, but yeah, we made lots of adjustments.
I feel like I'm throwing you under the bus, I want to make sure like you really... really do appreciate, um, and recognize all, all the good work here. Um, and I just wanted to also add, when we're looking at the restart, at the, I'm sorry, at the TAP plans, and I, I very much appreciate, um, the response to the questions I had around the baselines versus the targets. Um, so in the TAP plans, there's a, a target metric, you know, for each thing that, you know, the star, you know, we expect X percentage of kids to get meets on the algebra star, or, you know, whatever. And, um, we don't have the baseline in there, I, but my understanding is you, you created those targets based on what would, it would take to get that campus up to a C? Is that correct?
To break the accountability chain, correct. Yes, C or better.
That's a C, okay.
C or better, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. And then, um, and then, did you, I believe you did create a spreadsheet that actually has the baseline for each of the campuses, was that?
Um.
Is that available, if we wanted to know? Just so we get a sense of, like, so for Eastside, for example, we're, it says in their TAP that this year, like, the year we're in right now, twenty-two percent of the students will get a meets or above on the Algebra One star, okay? Last year, they were at eleven percent. I'm sorry, no, twenty-five percent for this year, last year, they were, they were at eleven percent, and so we're more than doubling, you know, the percentage of kids who are going to pass the star in algebra this year. So I just, you know, but I had to kind of look up their taper from last year to get that, so I think it'd just be very helpful for us in our mon- like, the next phase, when we're actually monitoring all this, to have a clear understanding of the baselines, just like we do with our scorecard, you know, real clear understanding of the baselines and, um, and, and the targets, and really understanding, like, okay, do we even know how close we are to getting to twenty-five percent at Eastside, for example? And like, what markers are we using to help determine that?
Yeah, uh, that's, that's exactly how, uh, we are going to, we are doing it. Um, the one thing I would also offer is that percentages can be deceiving sometimes because, uh, student populations are, vary from campus to campus. Um, and this is, I think, one of the challenges we have with really small schools. Um, we've talked about this a lot with our schools that have about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty students, where one student movement, well, a s- a family moving out, right, could change a school from a C to an F. It, it, it happens, it, it happened this year in twenty-twenty-five, multiple times. And so at a high school like Eastside, you think about, well, the student population is less than seven hundred, the number of students that are taking the class versus, you know, it, 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 you realize that it actually is very attainable. Um, you know, we can make the, we can move, um, so the percentage increase, and I just touched with text, like, I would expect them to increase by that amount because the starting point is so low, they need to double.
Yeah.
Right? Um, so I just, I think when we show that work, we can maybe be very trans- very clear about where we are, how the N or the number of students multiplied by the percentage, uh, or actually tied to after the multiplication occurs, uh, is, is being supported, so that we're very clear as to how we believe we'll meet that target. So, because it, it can seem as though it's a huge jump, but really, you know, given what we're tracking, it's very, we can do it, you know? So I think that's what's lacking and what we need to produce and how we'll track it on our end.
All right, thanks so much.
All right, I have a few questions. Um, first, can you explain the difference, uh, between the schools that have to put this into action immediately next year, and, and kind of whether you're going to see or not, how it impacts different, uh, the TAPs, the tips, the different plans? Some are TAPs that go into effect and some are TAPs that may go into effect.
Yeah, so, um, what you're referring to, President Boswell, and, and our community for awareness, it's really a difference between three UA and two UA campuses that are being, um, developed right now. So the compression of the release of accountability ratings, right? So we had twenty-twenty-three released in the spring of twenty-twenty-five, and then we had twenty-four and twenty-five accountability released August fifteenth, sixteenth, something like that. Um, and so what happened is, you had schools that got their second and third UA, like, at the exact same time from a release or requirement date. And so the agency, um, gave guidance to all school districts, and again, there are hundreds of school districts, hundreds of schools that are doing this right now. Uh, they said, if you have a two UA, develop your plan, it must get approved, and then you'll implement at the start of twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, for a three UAs, you develop the plan and you begin to implement as soon as the start, they get approved, effectively, so spring, um, twenty-twenty-six, right? Um, and so for us, because some of these are, um, restarts, some of them are reassignments, you know, the way that we've structured it is the reassignment action will occur next year, but the work leading up to it and the step, the things that we're doing now as part of that plan are occurring in the spring semester. Um, an example of that will be hiring, right? So we're going to hire principals for these schools in, um, in December, and, and then they're going to start kind of building out their team in the spring. That would be an action that's in alignment with the TAP, that'll be implemented, already being implemented, but fully actionable in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, if it's a two UA, you know, obviously, two UAs are mostly school improvement, we're not going through that process because that'll be the following year. Is that helpful?
That is helpful, thank you. Um, and, uh, on slide five, I know we have the eighteen-eighty-two contingency, and it's written specifically into some of the plans, it's available. I know, um, can you help me understand if, um, closing a school is an option in the same way in eighteen-eighty-two is if we have a school that we've put together and we feel like it's not going to be successful?
Yeah, so, um, when this occurs, it's when a school, um, uh, is in the year where they're taking the summative assessment or taking star in the spring semester that would contribute to its fifth UA, right? Um, and so the, the way that it would work, and this is really, um, for those schools that are, are further along in the accountability process, um, you cannot, if you were to choose a school closure versus a, um, an eighteen-eighty-two turnaround plan, the students would still take the summative assessment or the star, um, before the closing actually occurred. And so it doesn't, um, protect you from having, um, the intervention of a school closure or installation of a board of managers, um, which is, and so the, the, the flexibility in eighteen-eighty-two is that it gives you the, it consumes that first pause year in that fifth year. Um, and that allows us to, to restart, again, if we need to, uh, allows us to restart, monitor growth, because as Trustee Singh said, many of these schools are right there. I mean, they're, they're right there, and so a D is a pause, um, you know, we fully expect, I fully expect to have, to have way fewer F schools, um, because of the great work that's been going on and just the period. Um, so they're not, it can't be used interchangeably. Was that helpful?
That is helpful, thank you. Um, and I do want to pause and really share what our caller shared, what so many of my colleagues have shared, what you've shared, um, is just thank you to everyone who has been doing so much good work, um, to our educators, our principals, our classroom, teachers in the classroom, all the staff on campuses that support our students have obviously been working really hard, um, our families have been working hard to support our students, uh, and it is to interrupt that rapid progress is painful, um, and scary, I will, I will say, because we know this is working in a lot of places, and we're in a really hard place where this is the solution. Um, we have a short menu to pick from, and, and I just want to really, um, echo what I've heard is that we know people have been doing such good work because we see it paying off, and we also see the passion that people have for our schools, that families are so excited to choose these schools. And, and I think it's on us to, even as we're having to do these painful things, to do everything we can to offer those supports, to keep that momentum and to keep families feeling like they have a place, and to make sure our students feel like they have a place. So I just want to pause for a minute and, and share that appreciation and that recognition. Um, I have a question on slide twelve. The continuous, continuous evaluation of work. Um, I think to Trustee Singh's point, kind of how do we track this? And, and I will say, knowing what's what with, um, the three schools right now with Adobe Web and Vernit, it's a little scary not to know whether we're making progress halfway through the year, that's really frightening, and a quarter of the way through the time that we have. Um, and so I really, we adopted a constraint on our scorecard, we changed our scorecard to make room for this very specifically. And, um, to the superintendent, I would really love understanding how all of this is going to be evaluated, if you can bring a calendar to us, a recommendation to us about how we're going to track this. I see you looking at Dr. Maxwell in a way that suggests you may already be talking about this. So I, I really, um, after we're past this moment, if you could bring that to us, I think that would be really valuable, so we can know as a board, and so our community can know how we'll know if we're doing what needs to be done. So thank you for that.
I, I think, um, December information session or December board meeting would, I mean, we're, we, we want to share that, so, um, yeah, we, we can definitely do that.
Yeah, and I think just a calendar for sharing, sharing it about all of the schools, um, with our community, I think would be really valuable. I don't know if that looks like a dashboard, board meetings, um, progress monitoring, but this is a big deal, and it's really existential, um, for our district remaining hours, um, you know, with our community voice, and really want to be sure we're being thoughtful about that. Um, I have a question on slide sixteen. Um, if we believe that these, um, strategies are valuable, the supplemental hours, the family supports, um, some discretionary funds on that campus, because I think, you know, I think we've been talking about campuses know themselves best, right? Uh, why is that not part of the school improvement work? Um, if we think that's important because we are trying so hard to keep those schools from falling into that, um, spot? And if they're valuable strategies, what can we do to help make sure that's funded?
Yeah, so I, I would say, um, every, it, it adds up quickly. Um, you know, I was obviously pushing the team to, to really be thoughtful about the allocation of resources for, um, our three UAs as well as two UAs, and as you can see, it adds up quickly. You know, when you sum these two together, it's, you know, eighteen-point-two-five million. Um, and I also want to be, uh, clear with our trustees and with our community, like, we're actively pursuing, like, grants, like, anything that can help offset this cost so it doesn't all hit general operating budget. Um, there are, there are certainly things that we can pursue and partnerships we can explore. Um, you know, we kind of backed into and use staffing as the primary driver, uh, but I also want to be really clear that there's flexibility within these line items, which is why I didn't put allocated amounts and use kind of an estimated number. Because what happens is, as you get into each school, um, there are, you know, one school may need seven percent versus, you know, and fewer dollars for discretionary funds, or they have another resource they can rely upon. Um, so I guess we, we could add that, um, to those schools if we needed to, um, regarding, I mean, given the number and if it was the same allocation, maybe something slightly less, just to kind of start. Um, I can certainly talk to Katrina, um, and see, you know, if it was like thirty thousand or twenty-five thousand, um, coupled with the money that they have already, does that help us kind of move along? Because I'm going to have to multiply that by the number of, of, of two UAs and, you know, it, it'll add up, but I, I'm certainly happy to look at it, we can explore it, and I don't know, team, if, if that's something the board wants, I mean, and again, it doesn't have to be codified in this document, what I can say is we're going to explore it and then bring it back as part of the budget, because this is for the next fiscal year, right?
Correct.
Um, but I can certainly do that. Do you want to answer?
I was only going to add, sir, that it also, uh, Trustee Boswell, uh, with the staffing allocation, it actually will free up quite a, quite a few dollars that they have, that they are spending right now on staff and title money, that they can also reallocate in those ways. And so, this or that, it can, we would much rather, you know, be able to take the load of, of trying to keep a staff member and take that load off and let them use those dollars in a district, um, which would do the same thing.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I think, you know, I think our community has shown a real willingness to, um, a crisis is an opportunity for people to see needs and to see, you know, what not everyone has to pay attention to all the time, the lack of funding, you know, the shortage of funding, the high-stakes accountability, what's at stake if we don't help our students in the way that we need to help them, that we very much want to help them, that we are helping them, just not at the speed. You know, we have to accelerate that, and, and I do think, um, there's a moment to really lean into our community, these are our community's schools, and lean in and say, can you help us? You know, we don't have these things here, we would like to have these things here. So lean on us as well for, to be your allies in that, because we aren't the people doing it in the classroom, we're not the people working directly with our teachers, but we are out in the community and can be supports to that if you feel like that has value. So thank you for that. Um, my next question is, um, what kind of analysis was done? Um, I'd just like to understand, are we looking at individual students going to these campuses based on the populations now? Are we looking at comparable student populations in other districts? Like, how do we have a sense that schools with these percentages of emergent bilingual students, these percentages of students with economic disadvantages, uh, these percentages of students who are scoring at certain things on the star, how do we have faith and confidence? Kind of what work have you done to understand the populations you're putting together and why we believe this will be successful at each of these campuses?
Yeah, so I'll start off, and, you know, I'm certainly happy to, to add, um, kind of all these reports here that we've been kind of accumulating and building over a period of time. And what we did was, um, we, we, um, used estimates based on, um, projected reside as well as, um, kind of a, a, an assumption regarding distribution of students at any split campus. An example of that would be, if a school has, you know, sixty percent emergent bilingual student population and that school is splitting, then we would, you know, kind of take a weighted average and apply that to the receiving school. And then we would kind of use a, a calculation to just re-baseline and figure out, okay, what is the new expected, um, emergent bilingual student population, or the new, uh, student population that signifies the economic disadvantage, all of the groups? And then we took that and we compared it to other schools in Austin ISD as well as other school, just other schools in the state of Texas, uh, to see, A, um, could schools with similar demographics be successful? And the answer is yes, very much so, yes. Um, how much of a change did we see, um, in, in each of those distributions? And, and what I'll say, it's, it's, it's quite small. Um, you know, you might see a school go from like thirty-eight and a half percent emergent bilingual to thirty-nine and a, and a half percent or, or forty percent, they're all really quite small, and I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that in many cases, they're similar student populations, and you're adding to the numerator and the denominator at the same time. Uh, and these are all relatively close to each other, right? So when you think about the city of Austin, you know, just kind of geographically, you don't see huge swings when there are two schools that are near each other, and that's what we have in most cases. Um, and so that was, A, could the student population of the, the profile be successful? Yes. The second question is, based on historical, um, kind of, uh, summative assessments for each student, this is kind of projection-based, you know, what do we think the projection will be of the combined school? Uh, we ran those numbers, we have those numbers, we know, um, kind of where we end up, and it, I think in many cases, in almost all cases, it, it puts us in a position to be successful. I don't want to, I also want to be really honest, you know, students, when they come into a new school community, it, it could feel a certain way, you know, we have to make sure we have the supports, or it may not work that way. But we've done the analysis, um, and we feel that the movement within the student populations doesn't move us too far up or down the spectrum, that makes it to where we won't be successful. There's evidence in the state of Texas, and there's evidence in our school system. Uh, and I'm happy to maybe even post these, um, you know, but, but we did do the work.
Thank you, I think our community, some people are curious, I, I think it would be fantastic to post it, I think, especially because you are doing the work, please, uh, I think that would be really valuable to people, thank you for that. And thank you for the explanation of how you got there, because I, you know, there obviously is a deep amount of work in this, it's, I think it's helpful for people to hear. Um, so I went and pulled the data from the twenty-twenty-five star campus level data at the state, and I pulled out, I, I have special concern about middle school, um, I think for good reason, and, you know, historically, that's been a challenge for us, I think we're seeing it with Adobe Web and Vernit, that, that we're there for a reason, and I know good middle school work has been done. But, um, I pulled all the six through eight middle schools that are not charters in the state, and three of the, the fifteen middle schools with the highest concentration of emergent bilingual students are in Austin ISD, and all three are campuses with Fs. And I really want to understand at campuses, when we're putting together, you know, we are a geographically segregated city, we are a linguistics, linguistically segregated city, we are an economically segregated city, we're a racially segregated city. And when we are putting campuses together that happen to be nearby, um, we are matching need with need often, and I really want to understand, um, with language especially, you see a higher correlation, um, with lower campus ratings with language than you do with economic disadvantage, um, which are two of the categories that, that are on those spreadsheets. And I really want to understand how we are going to make sure, if you learn language, um, so much of your language learning happens like this, not in a classroom, your hours in the classroom are limited, um, and the language you're speaking on the bus, on the playground, at lunch, at home, um, often, you know, outweighs if you're speaking a, a language that's easier or comfortable that you're not learning, outweighs what you're doing in the classroom. What is our plan to make sure that our speakers of Spanish and other language really get, um, that exposure to English, but they need to be really successful by the time they're in middle school? Testing in English, um, you know, that we want to help our students retain their language, but we also want to be sure that they are successful, um, in our system, under the accountability system we have and in the world when they graduate, by being truly bilingual. And what are, what is, how do these plans? by being truly bilingual? And what are, what is, how do these plans include that?
Yeah, thank you, President Boswell. So, I'll have Dr. Maxwell maybe just kind of touch on it and then hand it over to you, that, or if you want to kick it off, either way.
Yeah, oh, sorry about that. So, the plans really address this, I think, and a lot of the work that we've been doing this last year and that we've increased this year and have really started concentrating, really doing some concentrated things in middle school as well, have to do around language development. Yes, one of the things that we know would benefit are, you know, exposure to English when they're in the, you know, in the playground and all the spaces in a campus. There are different levels of vocabulary that are spoken in those spaces. So, that's very common vocabulary, and it's not necessarily academic vocabulary, or the kind of vocabulary that English language learners need on a regular basis to truly access learning and really change the student outcome trajectory. So, one of the really things that, the really important things that we continue to focus on is, whether you're in a one-way or you're in a two-way dual-language program, you are focused on language of instruction. Again, we keep talking about that, it's such a simple, it seems like such a simple thing, but that provides significant access in the academic classroom and academic structure that changes the kind of language that students are actually acquiring. The added benefit of additional English speakers, English native speakers in that classroom in a two-way or in a one-way, because we have both of those situations, just the ratio is different in the classroom, is that you do have, I called it language brokering, I think a couple of meetings ago, that's the back and forth with the two languages. So, you get more exposure to the language that you are not native to, just by way of being around each other, but really that improves significantly when it's focused on academic learning, whether it's talking about math, whether you're in your language arts portion of the day. One of the things that we've started training our staff on and then have rolled out multiple trainings this year with instructional leaders and with teachers, is CBLI, Content-Based Language Instruction, so that you're marrying content and really strong language strategies when you're delivering that content. And that, again, that is across all content areas. So, that is something, and at the middle schools, we've added a few additional tools that campuses are using to monitor where they are in their language acquisition. And then, they actually have some instructional pieces in those tools that help teachers respond to where students are in English language acquisition, and then have things in the classroom that they can do that respond to that. That is all part of our strategy for emergent bilinguals. There's a very specific section in these plans that speaks specifically to emergent bilinguals, but those are really the highest-yield strategies that exist, that we've already started implementing. But, yeah, they're definitely a specific part of this plan. And Ms. Godenas, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that?
Well, Dr. Maxwell, very well said. I just want to go ahead and reiterate the importance of language of instruction, again, just repeating what Dr. Maxwell said. But we are also investing a lot of professional learning and supporting of teachers to maintain that language, which is, we have the Language Allocation Plan for Dual-Language Programs, and it's really looking at content and language together and the development of both, so it's academic language as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the academic language. I can talk to someone on a bus and I can't talk about math. So, yeah, totally, in Spanish, I totally get that, that there are a lot of gaps, because I didn't get that academic foundation. So, thank you for that, in the same way. So, my last questions are really about the choice of D to F campuses. I've shared my concern about that, you know, with turnaround plans and our choice to do things that are not in TEA's success guide recommended. And we know that initially it was F campuses that were reassigned, were intended to go to A or B campuses. With this cycle, they changed it to A, B, or C, but the documents nowhere say D. And we, you know, I trust that you've had all those conversations and that TEA, the people you're talking with are telling you it will be okay. And I am really struggling, partly because that's a big lift for a campus that's struggling to not be a D and needs to be successful, and partly because the whole point is, we need our kids to be in environments where things are working, and we don't want to further stress schools that are making that progress, that needs to be sustained, and we need plans that are going to work, and we need plans that TEA is going to be okay with. And, you know, telling you in a meeting is not the same as having them approved. And I would just love to hear from our council, our board council, and our general counsel about where the rules live, kind of the difference between a law and a rule, and kind of what risks we have, and then what happens if our plans are not approved.
Thank you, President Boswell, Board of Trustees. So, I think what you have referred to, I know is in the success criteria, and I understand the superintendent and the team have, you know, worked with the, worked with TEA and the understanding is that we are producing plans that we believe will be approved. So, I'll just first kind of comment on the process. I think you understand that we have to submit, once, you know, if this board approves those plans, then we'll submit it to TEA for approval. But if there are things that need to be adjusted, or if they don't believe that the plans as presented meet their criteria or are sufficient, then they will respond back to the district and give us an opportunity to make any adjustments. And they're also, within that process, required to be specific as to what they believe needs to change. And after that occurs, then we'll have an opportunity to resubmit. And so, I guess I'm highlighting here that there's more than just one opportunity to ensure that these plans are successful, although I know we've worked on the front end, as the superintendent indicated, to ensure that we're going to be presenting plans that will be approved. That criteria that you're referencing, you're right, and I know it's been said before, it is not law. It is a success criteria, which has changed, from my understanding, there are many different iterations, but it is one of five criteria. And there's a list of other criteria that has to be indicated, that I understand the team has worked through to ensure that the plans meet. And so, I know, you know, with what we've worked through, I think we've tried the best we can and with the team to make sure that these students end up in campuses in which they're aligned for success. But I know that there are some instances in which students are not going to A, B, or C campuses. But I believe there's other plans, again, in place to ensure that those students are successful. And throughout the process, I think there'll be an opportunity, if there needs to be changes, for those changes to occur.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, yeah, Ms. Video, I'd just love to know, kind of, your thoughts on it, and as a trustee, being asked to vote for things that don't align with what TEA has published, and that feels uncomfortable.
Yeah, understandably so. I would say, in terms of difference between law and regulation, the law is the law, it's passed by the legislature. But as, I know you're very familiar with Chapter 39 and 39A, they leave a lot of room for interpretation, and that's the function of the regulations. So, the regulations, and then plug in the gaps. Outside of that, TEA has regulatory guidance that they issue that is, doesn't carry the weight necessarily of law or regulation, but it's what they use, it's how they interpret those things. So, from the standpoint of feeling like you're being asked to approve something that is not necessarily consistent with what that regulatory guidance might suggest is optimal or what they're looking for, yeah, I get the cognitive dissonance that exists there. But I do, and I know you all know that your administration has worked exhaustively with the agency to try to make sure that you've got plans that you're considering right now that they will approve. So, as far as the inherent risk in that, I think it is risk that you've been living in, and it's risk that you're going to continue to be in. I don't think there is a path forward that is, that frees you from that. You are going to be living in this space tonight, tomorrow night, and probably for the next several years. And there's no way to really make that any easier. There just isn't.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I'll just say, the campuses, the plans I'm most concerned about are when, with Andrews, which has a D carrying the tap, and some students going to Pecan Springs, which is a multi UA campus. So, the stress of that on Pecan Springs and just that divergence from best guidance, concerned about the Wooddane going to Rodriguez with a D, that concerns me. I'm glad the community is staying together under this plan, which I think is better than it was, but that does concern me. Especially with Palm there, and I know Palm was listed to close, but Palm was right there and isn't a D. And then, the Woolridge restart, sending a significant number of students to Barrington. I mean, Barrington to Woolridge, yes, concerns me, with Woolridge having the need for a restart and absorbing more students from Barrington. That is a concern to me, of adding, again, extra stress to a system that is already under stress. And then, Bettecheck and Paredes, that concerns me. And Martin to Marshall, which has been working very hard, that has a D and has been working very hard to pull out of that, and again, adding more stress to that system. So, those, those all concern me. Not just from a, it doesn't work on paper, you know, from what TEA has said, but just, are there enough resources to help manage that stress, especially because we know students are bringing mobility during the year, they're bringing hunger, they're bringing a lack of health insurance, they're bringing a lot of other things in that stresses our systems, that I have real concerns. And I appreciate the video, I think that was helpful. But I still just really want to voice those concerns.
Yeah, President Boswell, I appreciate that. And those are our concerns as well. I think if we had options, better options, that still allowed us to progress as a system forward, we would have, that's what you would see in your documents. I think, when we started this process, one of the things we heard from trustees loud and clear was not to perhaps overload a school, and that's why we created splits, you know, and I would argue that Wooddane splitting to Rodriguez and Houston was in a response to what we heard initially in this process of not having a school that needs that type of support wholly going into one school. And after we went through the process, we heard from community that they wanted to stay together. So, we made adjustments in our plan to be able to take that on and do it well. And so, and then we talk a lot about the fact that these are, you know, these are ratings, and our students are more than a score, and our schools are more than a score. And so, like Rodriguez being a D now, being a B last year, you know, like, you know, these schools are doing incredible things.
They are.
They are. And I think you have to look at all of it, not distill it down to a single letter grade. And I think that when we look at the work that's occurring on all of our campuses, these are the options that we've arrived at, given all the constraints that we're managing, and they don't fit in a clean box, the TEA box, you know? They never, it was never going to, because the system is so complex. But we have a path that I think moves us forward, you know, and we'll hear what they say, and we're happy to make adjustments if they're not accepted, and we'll be responsive, as we always have been.
Yeah. Thank you for that. And I will tell you, I'm one of the first people to say that the scores measure one thing, they don't measure everything. And they don't measure who our kids are, or the work that's happening on campuses, or how much our kids are learning and growing and figuring things out. And it's the measure we have to live by. That is the measure we have to meet, while we are doing all the other good things for our kids. These measures matter, and I do have, I just, I know I voiced it before, and I just want to continue to voice it, because I do have real concerns. Thank you. Any additional questions? Trustee Hunter?
I'm gonna, little bit point of clarification with the superintendent's just saying, just so the community can understand, the plans are due for everybody, the whole state, tomorrow.
That's correct.
That's part one.
Tomorrow, close of business.
Yeah. That's hundreds of them, right?
Yes.
By March, I think, is it 17th? What is it?
Well, so, before they have to give a response?
Yes.
It's 60 days.
60 days. So, then, they will say, you're good, move forward, or they'll say, no, you're lost, or no, there's a cure period?
Yeah, so what they'll do is, and it'll be before, I expect, because we've been able to engage with the agency this entire time, that it won't take 60 days. If you recall, when we had the TAPS approved for Burnett, Webb, and Doby, it was within a couple weeks, even though they had allocated, you know, 60 days. So, I would expect that, I would push for that to occur. So, I don't expect us to wait 60 days before we get a response from the agency. If, as Kenneth Walker mentioned, our general counsel, we would expect to get specific comments that are actionable, meaning that if there is a tap that doesn't meet their expectations, for whatever reason, comments regarding, and redlines specifically as to why it doesn't work. And then, we would be responsive to it. We would then have the ability to submit an updated plan, and at that point, there'd be review period and then acceptance. And again, at that point, we would effectively, we'd have to have a really good reason not to be responsive to those comments, right? Like, we would ensure 100% acceptance at that point.
And then, the final, so, we send it, they look at it, they review it, if there's issues, it comes back to us. And then, by what date are they like, okay, go to it?
Is it 15 days after the second?
I think, isn't it April?
April 8th, that's by date now, yeah.
Okay. I just want everybody to be on the same page.
Yep.
Information.
Thank you. Any additional? Yes?
So, one quick clarification is, in filing these, at that point, it doesn't matter what the school gets this year? We have to implement no matter what?
So, it depends if it's a two UA or three UA?
Three UAs.
Yeah, so the two UAs are drafting right now, and we're submitting. Those are all the school improvement schools, and they were listed there. But three UA, they have to implement.
So, even if they got an A this year, we'd still have to implement?
Correct.
Point of more clarification for our community. So, there are taps that are written, to be like, you're on the list. There are taps that are implemented, saying you must do these things, right? How are they differentiated when we say two UA, three UA?
Yeah, so, so two UA predominantly...
Which means unacceptable.
Two unacceptable, unacceptable accounts. And again, it doesn't necessarily mean two Fs, it could be three Ds and an F, it could be four Ds, there are lots of ways that you can get there. And again, these go back to 2018, 2019 school year, so here you go, thank you. The two UAs are, in almost, in every case, a school improvement strategy, unless they're receiving from another school, and then that strategy is modified. And so, you can see here, there are 12 schools, they're all listed there, that are identified as school improvement. And so, when we submit to the agency tomorrow, I'm sorry, yeah, tomorrow, it'll all be there. And then, we would kind of implement fully in '26, '27. We would plan, but we would really, implementing that school year. For three UAs, we're getting started now, effectively. You know, we have to assume, and I'm going to assume, that by and large, these will be largely accepted. I do not expect a significant change, maybe some refinement in an area or two. And the reason being is that we have to hire principals. We have to start the process, because we do not want to miss the opportunity in the spring semester to ensure that these schools are fully staffed. And so, we are going to proceed, and again, I'm going to push the agency to give us clarity sooner than later. But that's how we're going to differentiate between two UA and three UA. So, closure reassigns and restarts are three UA, and then school improvement is all two UA.
Okay. And all the schools that have to implement, I mean, the state of Texas, are all going to need turnaround principals?
Correct.
So, Austin at 11, or is it 12?
So, so the restarts are, it's a combination, because one of the things that I want to be really clear is, if a school is going to a high-performing school, right, in this case, like, I'm going to use Barrington as a good example. Yeah, Barrington is going, the majority of the students are going to Gero Thompson, and so, therefore, Barrington's turnaround plan is going to be assigned to Gero Thompson. From the agency's perspective, because GT has been historically high-performing, they would expect that school to have very little disruption and continue to perform, right? Because they've set up systems, they've implemented well. So, you're not expecting a disruption in that case, meaning that there's not going to be a turnaround plan that has us suggesting in any way that the principal at GT is going to turn over. So, I want to be really clear, even though it is a tap three UA, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to find a turnaround principal.
Excellent.
Which is why the team and I have gone through and built strategies for each of these, and depending on the vote tonight, we'll kind of begin to take that forward. But it's not always one-for-one. There's going to be some of that shifting.
And then, you may see that there's a school that has a tap plan, but is also closing.
Tap plan, but also, so by way of a reassignment, so what I think you're referring to is a school like Bettecheck? Is that... Is that correct?
Wynn.
Wynn, that's exactly right. So Wynn Montessori has three UAs, they've been progressing, as trustee Singh said, to a 59, and I expect they're going to get to a D or not better this year, for sure. The way that it works is, the majority of students that are being reassigned, in this case to Andrews, Andrews will receive the turnaround plan that Wynn historically, that had accumulated, because it's based on where the assigned students are in the attendance boundary, that's how it works. In our conversation we're about to have regarding all the other movement in the system, you know, you'll see the Montessori program get relocated, but those are two separate actions, one is owned by the administration and by the board, and the other's kind of in response to turnaround plans. That is also going to be true for Martin, Dawson, Bettech, Barrington, as you just mentioned, which is a closure, right? And then Woodding.
I'm getting into the weeds of that, so that people can understand what is happening. Because if you think it's one thing, and you're like, you don't have to do that, it's not necessary to do that, and you can feel that, but there's, I don't want there to, well, yeah, as much as there can be, I don't want there to be asymmetry of information, right? You know what I know, so you understand why I'm doing what I'm doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? All right. Thank you all so much for the work, the conversation, the information. Thank you, Superintendent Segura, and thank you to everyone who's come for the other part of our meeting as well, for waiting while we had a really thorough, thoughtful discussion about this as well. So at this time, we will adjourn our public hearing, take a short break, and then return to open the regular voting meeting. Vice President Willy Chudrowa has mentioned to adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
The meeting is adjourned at 7:32 PM, and we will be back in just a very few minutes.